Good evening. This is the City of Pleasantville, City Council. I work for you. Today's date is December the 18th, 2023. The time is 6:30 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper and performs with the Open Public Meeting Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call?
Davenport.
President.
Fama Laram.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Camona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Sistrum.
Present.
All the members.
I have to take motion approved in the previous segment.
Yes.
Second. All the favor.
Hi.
As having, um, may you have a commendation?
Yes, I do. Wonderful. I like to have a good goose kind of thing. How about you? Hey, everybody. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
I have an accommodation.
It's work.
Council, will you please stand?
Mayor. We'll get them to go on that side.
Everybody turn around. You want to picture one? And we're being on the face of town. I'm checking council standing with me. This is a commendation from the city. In the midst of smiles, City of Pleasantville Office of the Mayor certificate of commendation. Whereas Pleasantville Junior Jokers Football Organization is a nonprofit, community-based football program structured to offer counseling, support, sportsmanship, community pride, a sense of work, and great football to the children of our community. And whereas Pleasantville Jokers, excuse me, Pleasantville Junior Jokers Football has greatly benefited the youth of Pleasantville by providing holistic programs that assist with developing each child socially and academically to ensure and promote student athleticism. And whereas due to the dedication, commitment, and hard work, the Pleasantville Jokers, Junior Jokers, Taxi and JV Teams are the 2023 AC IFL, which is the Atlantic County Junior Football League, champions. So let's get to it. And welcome. I'm Judy M. Ward, Mayor of the City of Pleasantville, New Jersey. On behalf of City Council, this administration, and the citizens of Pleasantville, do commend the Junior Jokers Football Organization Taxi and JV Teams and coaching staff on the winning of 2023 Atlantic County Junior Football League Championship. And witness whereof, I have stepped my hand and cause the seal of the city of Pleasantville to be affixed this 18th day of December in the year of our Lord, 2023. Signed, Judy Ward. A congratulations to you all. There's a lot of things that you could do. You're out there in a structured environment. And what you're doing now, you could go to high school, you could go from there, get a scholarship, and that leads to a career with good money. So continue with your sports and your academics and continue on. Thank you. Is there anything anyone would like to add?
I want to add, not only to the great young men, but also to the cheerleaders out there who, you know, were out there through rain, wind, and to the staff here, the coaches, you know, you all's dedication, hard work. I just wanted to continue on with much love, success. You know, Tamara, I'm here if you ever need me. And, you know, hopefully you all have a blessed and great and winning year. Yeah, thank you.
We had a great year. Thank you for everything, all the support, whatever support. I'm just learning things. But yes, thank you for everything.
Excuse me. What's your name?
LaShanna. I'm Coach L.
Nice to meet you.
Yes.
Yes.
This is the epitome of the takes a village because every single person up here is just as important as the next. And there's always somebody at home to make sure each one of the players, the cheerleaders, all have their uniform. And that's a hard task to do. So thank you very much.
Yes, very proud. Any other? Anyone else?
Well, you know, it's a little bit more personal with me. I have two grandsons that you guys look out for. So I just really want to say it's not only this year, but every year that you guys are out there. You do a heck of a job and we just appreciate all the love and support that you give the city of Pleasantville through our kids. So keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I want to say congratulations. You guys keep up the good work and stay out of trouble, okay?
I want to say thank you especially to the coaches and the managers for mording the minds of our children through sportsmanship. Keep it up. You are a beauty and a fisher for our generation. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Great work. Keep it up, actually. And I want to thank the coaches, of course, and can't forget the parents as well. So you all, thank you for great work.
I'd like to say thank you for the season that you gave us. It was a good winning season, both, uh, both of you groups. And, and just make sure, you know, you got a chance to kick butt on the field, kick butt in the classroom. That's what you really want. That's what be the main thing to do. Make sure you do it. And I know you can do it too as well. Make us all proud. Thank you, man.
I just want to say something too. I just want to thank you all for coming out and showing support. It's not many cities that you'll go to and you'll see the councilmen and women, mayor and all at their functions helping wash cars, doing the coin dropping, things like that. So we do appreciate your support. Thank you.
Excuse me. Can I say one more thing? First, and also thanks to the parade because it was very nice. You know, it was late, it was very nice. I want to thank the police department because I really didn't realize how much work you guys had to do to get that done. So we appreciate that also. And the fire department. And the fire department. Hey, great job, you guys.
Yes, can they come over here?
Can they come up there?
Do you like it up here?
She's the one where you went down. I want your hands to come over here to the end. I look back at you a lot.
All in it, all in, all in.
She wants you at the end.
How do we all want to do it? That's like, that's good. You know what he said? No, no. Because they were, alright, that's good. Alright, look at me. Alright.
Thank you.
No, no, it's there.
Okay.
Alright, so I got it here.
Oh, that's fine.
Congratulations.
When it ends.
Bye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Okay. Will anyone stand again, please, and have council president come up?
You said everyone of these councils stand?
Well, okay. Everyone can stand. Okay. Uh, you could, your last official council meeting, and we are recognizing you tonight. We have typed the commendation, Office of the Mayor, City of Pleasantville. Whereas Ricky Sistrum was elected as councilman for the City of Pleasantville in January of 2003, he served as the chairman of both the sewer and recreation committees for many years. And whereas Councilman Sistrum, in his capacity as recreation chair, took pride in the naming of the Ralph Peterson Senior Recreation Center. Councilman Sistrum also served as council president from 2021 to 2023. And now therefore I, Judy M. Ward, Mayor of Pleasantville, New Jersey, on behalf of City Council, this administration, the citizens of Pleasantville, do commend Ricky Sistrum for 20 years of service as councilman of the city of Pleasantville, and do pray for a healthy and rewarding retirement. And witness whereof, I have stepped my hand and cause the seal of the city of Pleasantville to be affixed on this 18th day of December in the year of our Lord, 2023. Signed, Judy Ward. Been a long time.
Yeah, it's been a long time. I kind of want to answer my, uh, my words that, uh, when we end, but, um, it's been a journey. Yeah, it's been a journey. I thank you and appreciate this. Thank you.
Ricky, can you stand here, please, for a second?
Mayor, we appreciate those congrats for our, our council president Ricky. But we have a little something here for you as well, Ricky. And it's a recognition award presented to Ricky Sistrum. It's the sheer appreciation for your dedicated service to the city of Pleasantville as a councilperson for 20 years. Pleasantville City Council, December the 18th, 2023.
That was supposed to happen.
We are now in agenda review.
Next up is agenda.
We have Resolution 162, authorizing the treasure to cancel reserve account balances, no longer required.
Any questions?
Next is Res-
Next, yeah.
Resolution 163, provided for budget transfers for year 2023 appropriations and the current fund. Resolution 164, provided for budget transfer for year 2023 appropriations and the sewer fund.
Any questions?
Resolution 165, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an agreement with the County of Atlantic Municipal Alliance Grant Program.
Any questions?
Resolution 166, an add-on, approval for submit of a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the United States Department of Homeland Security for the fiscal year 2023 FEMA Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program.
Any questions? Standing there.
Next is review of the bill.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, regarding the bills, there were paid between the last council meeting and this council meeting. Uh, top of the page, these are normal. Some of these bills were overlooked in the last council meeting, including the one of rated all regular ownership. Uh, that is a reversion of the trash that for some reason wasn't picked up the last council meeting and we redogged it this council meeting. And then you look down to wire transfers. Uh, some of the bigger ones are medical benefits for, um, both retirees and employees for November and December. Um, and 150 is money transferred from the UZ as part of our budget to offset some of the tuition salaries in '23. Now, the 750 is transferred from the store utility to offset the tax rate that against part of the budget for both the current fund and sewer fund. And then the 555, the payroll from last week. If you go into bills to be paid, you go down to page one, we're in the middle of Future Systems. It's 20,000. Uh, back in January, there was a contract with Future Systems for $50,000 for, um, the abandoned properties as well as recreational software. Um, they billed us incorrectly. Uh, they billed us at half that number for the first 10 months. Um, and then we were able to, uh, talking to Brian and Ted, we were able to correct it for this time. If you go to, go to page three, halfway down, let's see concrete. This is draw four. And at West Park Avenue, Downing Road, phase one, construction project. We are 95% done with that project. And there's like $80,000 left, I believe, to be paid in original contract. Three down, or four down is Jim Vitella. He, for a planning grant, he, we got a grant from estate to look at all the LED lightings and not any on Main Street, cross over the rest of your buildings. Uh, once the grant came in, we were able to pay Mr. Vitella for work to be done for the last seven, eight months. Um, and Jim and I have a agreement. Once, once the grant went in, we will, we will pay him off. On page four, halfway down, we have a total spool board. This is for the month of December for the payment of taxes. Go to page five. Um, third from the bottom, Jennifer Cook. This is her last payment as a, you know, as her attorney, as a prosecutor. As we know, it's January 1st, we're moving to Atlantic City with the new court system. And then Ken Minagis, uh, he was also missed when we opt out of, uh, last month. We, we paid the employees who were eligible for an opt-out payment. He was missed, uh, in that, that area. Other than that, there's just operating bills. We're trying, we're cutting down very, very, very much though, uh, just because we're near the end of the year. And we want to make sure that we don't overdraw any, any, um, budget line item or even overdraw the entire budget. So we're, then that's what transfers were done for. Because when you do a budget at the beginning of the year, obviously things change to save a lot of just to move money back and forth. As long as we don't exceed the original 30, original budget number, which was $33 million. So we're able to move money back and forth.
May I ask you a quick question? Because I didn't get the balance you said on Vitella. Well, no, Mr. Vitella, he said the finishing balances. Did you give a number for that?
$25,000.
$25,000?
Yeah, the grant was $25,000.
I'm sorry. Um, you said the grant is $25,000 and we paid him $21,000?
We had, we had paid him a little bit earlier. Uh, actually, it told him to give him like $23,400. So we didn't, we're not getting any $25, entire $25,000. We paid him something probably back in March, when we did first initiated it. Then he and I talked, we're going to, yeah, set up payment. We're not going to pay it all, at all, until the actual grant came in. So he was, he, he took, we paid him like three, three grants early before I got party, the party was working. But I realized we needed the money elsewhere. And once the grant came in, we would take care of it that way.
If I can share, just elaborate just a little bit more, because I think there's to be some theory. The planning grant itself for all audits throughout the city for the, um, energy efficiency is for $25,000. So how it was paid out was based on the way this will be explained. But the grant itself, the planning grant itself is for $25,000 for the grant writer to do all the audits and all of the necessary work associated with the audit for the energy savings for the entire city.
Yeah, I paid Mr. Vitella with, when he submitted some of the bills earlier, what? And it's really an oversight on my part. But he also does work for, ain't being paid. He does work for other grants. And that part of the, the planning grant was paid earlier. And that's an oversight on my part. So we, we were able to back off.
Okay, so that money was just for the legal part of it, just getting everything in order? That's not the physical that they was, okay, good.
In fact, we put it out to bed, I believe, probably in the next week or two or month. So probably next couple of weeks, we will do something about it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is public portion. If you want to be public, you can speak. Please do so. This is kind of a Jada, a Jada, a Gomu, and a Jada, and stand on. Okay. Motion to close public portion. Motion. Second. On favor? Aye. Next, open discussion for your council. Council, please.
Nothing.
Next, for the family.
Nothing.
Down the board? Nothing. Nothing at this time. Nelson, Berkeley. Nothing at this time. Taking a motion to close the session. Motion. Very young.
No, I don't. Thank you.
Motion. Second. On favor? Aye. Good evening. This is the City of Pleasantville, City Council. Right, my meeting. Today's date is December the 18th, 2023. The time is 6:55 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper and performs with the Open Public Meeting Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Uh, would you please stand for implication? Thanks.
To the nations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for what you stand is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Roll call?
Davenport.
President.
Fama Laram.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Camona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Sistrum.
Present.
All the members.
Another change, motion discussed with the re love of, uh, the previous minutes.
Very correct.
Second. Call, please. Aye. Any more qualifications or presentations for that?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, clerk?
Yes. First is Resolution 162, authorizing the treasure to cancel reserve account balances no longer required.
All more questions? Motion. Motion.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fama Laram.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 163, provided for budget transfers for year 2023 appropriations and the current fund.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fama Laram.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 164, provided for budget transfers for year 2023 appropriations and the sewer fund.
Motion. Second.
Yeah, I'm just writing it down. Are you going to say it?
Roll call.
Oh, Pivroca, Davenport.
Yes.
Fama Laram.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 165, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the County of Atlantic Municipal Alliance Grant Program.
Motion. Second.
Second is that Davenport?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So noted. Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fama Laram.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 166, an add-on, providing, approving for submit of a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the United States Department of Homeland Security for the fiscal year 2023 FEMA Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program. Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fama Laram.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. I mean, the motion to approve the bill is?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fama Laram.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution, motion approved. Need a motion to approve bingo grant for licenses.
Motion.
Second. Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Fama Laram.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is public vote.
Excuse me. Can I just ask a quick question? Um, I was on number 165. Do we have a list of the organizations that this money is going to be given to?
Yes.
If you do, I can give it to you. Thank you.
I'll send it out to all, all council.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay. Okay.
Do you want to go through, uh, go through, uh, go to, uh, uh, session, session, yeah, okay.
No one has signed it for, I'm doing a question.
Give one from the public which can speak, this term, no one can, can speak, uh, entertain a motion called the public, cause the public portion. Motion, second. All favor, uh, that is, do you know, we have comments from council. Council, council one, defense.
Good evening, everyone. This is our last meeting of 2023, um, I just want to say that we have accomplished some things here, um, as a city, we have new projects that's up and running, and projects that's going on now, we had numerous activities throughout the city, um, we, I just feel like they're, we're really the city on the move right now, and I want to say Merry Christmas to you all and Happy New Year.
Council, what we talk about.
Um, we have two back parties coming up towards the end of the month, I believe, one is on the 27th, skating party at the, uh, rec center, there's something else right in that same time period, the next day at the rec center.
Movie night.
A movie night. Um, but I'm gonna go back to a week ago, a week and a half ago, to the Winter Wonderland, because I think that's one of the, it's a really nice thing that we do in this city. Uh, this year, through the magic of the powers that be, they added a magician, and I, I told the story the other day, I think it's kind of worth repeating, because it gives you the sense that we have hope in the city. Uh, the magician called a young girl up to the stage to help her with a, a magic trick, and she put a couple little things in a bag, and she asked the little girl to say the magic words. Well, the magic word when you're dealing with a magician is abracadabra, but to that little girl who was raised the right way, the magic word was please. And that should be the magic word for everybody, please and thank you, and it was a great night, and I thank the ARP for coming out and helping with the food and, and everybody, it was just a, a really nice thing.
Well, it's the end of the year, I just want to say thank you to all of you guys that helped us out this year, you've been doing various things, uh, police department, fire department, public works, everybody, and, uh, wish you a happy holiday, everybody stay safe, and again, you know, I want to thank council president for 20 years of service, you know, we appreciate it, 21, uh, give you, keep that extra, but anyway, congratulations and enjoy, yeah, I will bless you.
Thank you.
Well, I want to say congratulations to councilman Systrom, president, and I also want to say, uh, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everybody, God bless everyone, stay safe, don't drink and drive, please, stay safe, and congratulations to the Johnny Jokers again, our best ones, stay safe and keep up the good work.
Council, perfect.
I, I want to say thank you to everyone as we come to the close of the year, chief, I want to say thank you very much, mayor, I want to say thank you, council president, I want to say thank you, you were the few person that I knew when I moved in the city earlier, and you inspired me a lot, we had a lot of program and collaborations before I became council person, from this city, we sent supply to Africa, the main ball of CC, and he was, he was one of the ones involved in it, and I can still remember that, and I'm so glad that I'm in a position that we can do better now together, but I want to also say thank you to our solicitor for being here, you were a true guide to us, especially a newcomer, first time, you were very tolerant and patient, you knew how to motion, and I, I highly appreciate you, I will be missing you, and then God bless you anywhere you go, and I wanted to thank you, I wanted to thank you to the staff and administration, our powerful, thank you very much, and then God bless all. Thank you.
Like just to wish everybody a happy, healthy, prosperous, uh, holidays, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Uh, thank everyone for coming out, thank you, congratulations to the Jokers, the cheerleaders, and their partnership this year, and, um, have a nice evening, Happy New Year, have a nice evening.
Congratulations again to the Jokers for the, for their program, I wish we had kept, uh, I wish we had kept, uh, uh, this, this, this is taking me into this world, this world that, but, uh, for some, for some business we have, yeah, brother, yeah, I see him in the back room, but, um, um, it's, it's been, it's been a pleasure, the pleasure is never mine, it's been tough at times, you know, I thought it was tough this year, as tough as it was these past couple of years, uh, sitting up in the city council with, um, with our new air, new incoming and trying to manage new projects and things of that nature and everything, it was awful lot tougher, uh, 08, 09, different people, our community was just looked at a whole lot different, a lot of bullets were flying, a lot of things like that, and, and, you know, I don't really want to talk about times like that, but, but that's kind of horrific every time, so, so, a lot of prayers from myself has gone to this community, I know I grew up praying for my family, my mother, father, you know, the whole, everybody knows the whole routine, I never thought I'd pray for the city of Pleasantville as much as I have, um, all these years, and I always will, uh, my 21 years of service here, um, took it serious, I missed three council meetings, as far as councils, I mean, I was late to a lot of committee meetings. But, uh, three council meetings, you know, um, was it, probably, probably about now with this building or this waterfront over here, about 250 million dollars worth of development, doesn't seem like much, like, may, may seem like normal stuff to the average Iowa people that drive by and everything, but to be a part of that and to learn from the Pete, the mayor Pete, and, and Lincoln Green, and, uh, both Harmons, things of that nature and everything, we had a, a stronger continuity, a lot of respect for one another, we listened to each other all the way out and everything, and that was the most important thing, that, that if there's anything to take from that, it's that, to have ability to have respect and enough to listen to everybody, and value their opinions, and not, you know, just be disgusted, because you're on the other side of the opinion, because sometimes, you know, it takes different viewpoints, um, I really felt as though that we got a chance to, um, do some special things a couple of years back with that, um, what I saw in the concessionaire agreement, it didn't happen, but I thought, I thought it would have, and I thought it should have, and, you know, it soared, soared to me now, because I know how much that, that means for the infrastructure of a community, but that didn't take place, but one thing did, that did take place, is the last time I went, I spoke about the waterfront, um, and, and what we could do over there, they were just kicking me in the side to see all this development all around us, and then we're looking across the land that we can develop for all of these years, I'm thanking everybody that has something to do with that, you know, Ward, and all this, uh, council, council Davenport, everybody had their hands in that, because, and I guess Mr. Harmon brought it to light, when he came and said that we've been trying to do that, to, see, been trying to talk about the waterfront since 72, or some, 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 some crazy year, I thought it was just 35, I thought it was just 35, just to do that under this watch right here, uh, under our watch, and had ability to, um, to, to, to put this, our community into a, a, like a different standard. Councilman Davenport and myself, we went over to, um, to, to that, uh, Green Acres Park the other day, we walked the hills and anything, just tried to stay out of way of construction, construction was having, they were, um, um, had a lunch break at that particular time, but, um, we got a chance to see what it's going to look like, and, and it's, it's going to be special for this, it's going to be special, it's going to bring, hopefully and gratefully, it's going to be, bring other attractions, I had a lot of meetings, a lot of meetings, a lot of special meetings, and a lot of special meetings, because I just wanted you guys to be informed on the decisions, everybody to be informed and kind of learn, and, and the person that made that happen the most, for, for me, and helped for me, because we had, uh, a year ago, that year prior and everything, almost like you had complete total chaos and everything, uh, solicitor, when she came in, she helped, it, it, to have them attorney, that comes in to help you, not wa, not sit and watch you fall apart, you know, that means the world, some, for someone to not sit and watch you fall apart, know that you're going to fall, fall apart, and then give an infomercial and say, hey, listen, you know, if you need me, you know, I'll be here for you so I can represent you, why don't you catch us before we fall, and tell us the right way to, to kind of navigate this thing, because we all trying to navigate it at the same time anyway, you know, nobody's perfect up here, out there, over there, we just trying to do very best we possibly can for, for this city, and I've always done that, I took pride and attempted to try to do that, I thank y'all, thank y'all for listening to me this time, thank you for your help, thank you for your flex, uh, thank that lady out there, my, um, my, my lady over at Tuesday and Batista, uh, for showing up for this last meeting here, and I appreciate working with you, and, and not a baby, because I think you learn more when you catch your back against the wall, and you gotta attempt to try to fight your way through, if it was all just straight easy, you know, you don't, you don't learn as much, you get a whole lot of success, you think you know it all, and, and, and you really don't, so when your back is against the wall, as much as you possibly can, you gotta dig, pray and dig, try to find the best resolutions and everything, like the chief does so many days with the community, right, chief? So, left being said, I appreciate you guys, thank God for the opportunity, they have bestowed upon me and my family, and I'll see you soon. Big question. I entertain a motion at this particular time to go into executive session for.
Contract.
Contract. Motion, second. Thank you.
Yeah, body into executive session for purposes of discussing contracts, um, the information discussed will be available when the, it's no longer deemed confidential, and where the public has the right to, uh.
All right. Anything else in better order, anything? That's it? That's it? Oh, I'm, I'm just, just one last, one, one last thing from, from myself, uh, everything that I've ever done, the most, the thing I got the most pleasure out of doing was the years at the rec center for the young people that come for their first job, we had a lot of new hires, uh, to be in that room, honestly, you can't hire everybody, what you can direct kids, young kids, that you don't wear dish, stand up, sit up straight, uh, stand up tall, speak up, uh, let your voice be heard, just to be, be in the room to correct those, I wish we could give everyone a job, but we couldn't, don't, 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 don't drop that off, you know, whoever's with the rec center, had it in the rec center there, don't, don't let that, that should be someone from council that would be in there with, um, Mr. Metro, who's that, who was that, what's, how's that set, how's that set up usually done? Most of the years.
You're, you're interviewing team, you want them to be a part, you're recommending or suggesting that they be part of the interview?
More than suggesting, don't drop that ball in doing that, you know, that's, that's council's piece to be in there, and, and, and you kind of cover it too, because the three people don't make the decision whether whoever's going to be employed, but to see the faces, to be able to be in the room, and to be able to correct some of your little lady that wore it dressed too short, or whatever, or tell somebody they did a great job, that's why they got, that's why they got hired, and that's the first, and a lot of times, that's their first paycheck job, don't take that money, right, don't, don't, make sure you take care of the rec center. That being said.
I want to add something, I just want to add to, I'm saying anything, but I want to add that, thank you for your, your service here, you was a blessing to all of us, um, like Ricky said, you know, sometimes when your back is against the wall, you come out fighting, but we did learn a lot from you, and I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you again.
Yeah, we want to thank you for the services, for your life and your others, appreciate most. I entertain a motion to adjourn, and Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas.